Meaning the order at six thirty P M. This is the committee of the whole administration operation Monday, March eleventh, twenty twenty four. Our mayor, Tony DeShaw, will not be with us tonight, and I don't think there are two. Okay, so Mister Hunter is away for sure. First and foremost, approval of agenda. May I have a mover in the second. Proof of agenda. Move by Mister Ward, second by Mister Smell. On favor. Sclosure, procuring any interest in conflict of interest in general nature thereof, is there any? The table, none here? Very good, thank you. This is the rise of the previous committee of the whole meeting minutes, if any. We'll be mover for that. Delegations and presentations, we have one tonight, Spencer Mill. Uh, for their twenty twenty four community grants and donation requests. It will be run by Mary Tessay and Tim East. We have ten minutes. We will, we'll let you, we won't go right by the clock, so we'll let you go a little bit over. Or a little bit under if you want, we've got busy nights to. Go ahead.
Our thanks for having us this evening. My name's Tim East, and this is my colleague, Mary Tessay, and we're from. The Central Mill Foundation, so. Central Bill Foundation seeking ten thousand to support installation of an elevator in the Spencerville Mill. For our first slide there, so Spencerville is one of two historic sites in Evansburg Cardinal. The village of Spencerville, so it's looking in this village of Spencerville, as you know, it steeps in rich history. And cultural significance. Um, establishments of mill by Kelly and David Spencer. The eighteen hundreds were key to establishing the community of Spencerville. The community of Spencerville grew out of the establishment sales. It is important to the history of Spencerville. Um, so the current stone structure is iconic, and has been that I saw over the last thirty years. With funding for private donations, um. Federal, provincial, and local grants and fundraising, and, um, you know, is a tourist destination within. Evansburg Cardinal, people come from across Canada, uh, there are some that come from Texas to see the mill. Uh, that's reported in our guestbook, I think even one from South Korea, I think I've heard about, so people come from all over to. Visit the mill and plus visits, um, the area and, um. We'll talk a little bit more about what that does a little bit later. Uh, so how do we ensure that the mill is inclusive for all, so when, so according to accessibility. For Ontario for Disability Acts, uh, the A O D A. Provincial government has the mandate to establish accessibility standards that organizations are required to adhere to. And, um, these standards are aimed at enhancing accessibility. And inclusiveness throughout Ontario by twenty twenty five. When the standards will be implemented and enforced. Occasional individuals wanting to attend events on the upper level or see exhibits on the lower level, uh. People can't attend because they're unable to navigate the stairs, so just to reiterate on that point, um, the upper level. Is used frequently for event rentals such as weddings, and we are seeing. Circumstances where young couples wanna have their weddings at the mill. And because an older relative or relative, um, that's in terms of accessibility issues is unable to. Uh, get up the stairs, they unfortunately decide to. Vote elsewhere, taking their event outside of the township and take their goal with them. As such, um, the lower level, the those who have been to tour the mill. Um, is where all the machinery still runs from the turbine. And that is, uh, what I would say the best part, seeing the turbine run. But being unable to navigate the stairs presents an issue. So everybody very reactive, both the levels will offer a lot of opportunities for both visiting our community. To see the exhibits and events help in our mill. So going over the economic impacts. Uh, so our, uh, role extends beyond our cultural significance. We play a role in local economy, an example being people come and see the mill. And then they might go and grab a slice of pizza at the village pantry, and they might, you know, go look at gas at Romans. Um, they may flow around, walk around, maybe have, um, like eating shows, um. They also might, um, ask, you know, what other historic sector around here, we direct them to window points. And they come down to Johnstown, maybe even onto, um, Cardinal to see the gal, uh, canal. And tour and spend their dollars in different parts of the township, um. Also by sorting the venue for community events and rentals, and they'll attract, you know, hundreds of visitors to our village each year. Um, making it an economic driver in our area. So, as I mentioned, these visitors, they visit the mill, they go to local shops, um. And retrieve it to the vitality of our community. So, um, through strategic partnerships with local organizations, um, so example of those being. You know, friends at the library, we tell, um, you know, events with, um, coming out of the old food, uh, and drink events. In collaboration with, um, the friends of the library, so. We are a community space where other community groups benefit from the mill, um, we're hosting, um, the golf tournaments. In collaboration with the Sonic Lodge, so we are, uh, integrated in the community. And that demonstrates our commitment to community engagement and developing, as our developments. And fostering a strong community-oriented organizations, uh, dedication, financing, developing of the township of Evansburg Cardinal, so people. Come and visit the mill and enjoy all the great things that the townhouse has to offer.
So we have limited access, as Tim talked about, to this first and third levels of our mill. Um, this impacts not only revenue, but also visitors and how valuable their experiences when they come to Spencerville Mill. Two thirds of our building is inaccessible to those that cannot do the stairs. Tim should already told you about an example where a grandmother was carried up the stairs by her room's, room's many grandson. And, um, she was a bit embarrassed and waited to be the last guest to welcome steps to her, the wedding. Um, we've seen a young couple coming to a magic show whose newborn infant was sleeping in a stroller. And the newborn infant needed to be awakened to be taken in the second level, so the older sibling could enjoy the performance. Elderly men like my dad, that was, uh, very, uh, connected to the milling industry and carpentry industry. Are unable to go to the basement to see the nineteen thirties turbine that we spent hundreds, tens of thousands of dollars refurbishing. It is really the highlight of the whole, uh, site. Recently, we lost out on a full day rental, which would have been a twelve hundred dollar, uh, value to a Renaissance group, uh, that do reenactment. They would have brought one hundred people from across eastern Ontario to the village for one ten hour. Despite our mandate to serve as a community hub, these limitations hinder our ability to embrace inclusivity. How do we fix this? Install a modern day elevator that provided quotes that we think the guts of the machine is going to cost about seventy-five to ninety-five thousand dollars. And we're still waiting for folks to come in on quality heritage carpentry that will keep our basement, will be Ontario heritage trust, um, alive. So twenty twenty-three, we spent a lot of effort, uh, getting our fundraising going. Uh, we had an anonymous donor tell us that they would give us thirty thousand dollars if we could raise thirty thousand dollars, so we. Came up and met the challenge, um, and so we have sixty thousand dollars that we have, uh, raised to date for this project. But we still have work to do. We are very fortunate for our past projects to have received support from the Port of Johnstown Community Fund. And we're also grateful for the ongoing support from Evansburg Cardinal for the storage and workspace in the town hall. And the maintenance of our mill park grass. Dispensable mill. Remains committed to preserving the historic significance of the Griss Mill by maintaining its authenticity, showcasing original. Machinery and sharing the stories of the past in our community. Ensuring its historic viability goes far beyond today. The tangent of Evansburg Cardinal holds a key to the future. Where dispensable mill can be appreciated by everyone, strengthening our ties to its community. And involving, evolving to the community public as, as spiders to be. Thanks for your time, you have any questions?
Uh, we'll start here to my right, Mister Ward, go ahead.
Okay, I have just a couple of questions here, so, um, which one do we want to start with first? Uh, first, how many people roughly pass through the, the mill on an annual basis, do you know?
Well, uh, we hosted, uh, six weddings last year, and there were about a hundred people at each wedding. And then we saw about five, five hundred through the eight weeks that we were open for. Um, a museum in July and August, and then we had events in the shoulder season, so I think we're, you know, close to fifteen hundred.
Okay. Should, and, um, you guys, I don't know if there is or what, what it looks like, is there any funding that's available for heritage sites for the A O D A by chance? I haven't heard of anything, I don't know if this is what did.
In particular to the A O D, there's plenty, uh, that we are looking to that are particularly for heritage sites, but not particular to, uh, the A O D.
Because if I'm mistaken, it seems like they're putting this rule in, it's, it's, it's mandatory, right? Is that not the correct statement there, or?
I have asked the question, I've only read it's on the website, so I, you know, that wording that I provided in this, uh. In your, is right off the website, that in twenty twenty-five, it's gonna be in the, and they're going to be, um. And, uh, enforcing those rules. So how they can enforce.
Okay, and I guess more of a question to, to staff, and, and do we know of anything about this that we could, that, that there, there, the re-leveraged for anything from a, that perspective? For heritage sites, I don't know if we can.
Through the, through, through this year, I'm not, we're, it'd be a raid on, they're not stopped. Certainly be something that will, you know, if something comes across, we're.
Absolutely. We're in the, in the midst of gathering all things required for, right, that's called cultural spaces. Not a hundred percent, uh, that's, 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 um, that would also offset some costs of this project, so we definitely have our radar up there.
Thank you. This is, uh, I have a couple of questions, uh. Are you open on your own?
So we are open, uh. Activity start at the mill around May, usually the new book around is kind of our seasonal openings, um. And from that point on, we have different events, you know, after we call the gala dinner in early June. Um, and then private rentals as well. We open for visitors, uh, July second, day after the anniversary day. And we are open up until Labor Day weekends. Totally because of Labor Day and then after that, um, we are once again open for private rentals and, you know, special events, um. Or any web show this year, that sort of thing.
We've got Gaila with sold out in sixteen hours yesterday.
And the, uh, it would be great if we could be open more, but reasoning behind that is grant for students, the grants will be gets. Or they able to get eight, uh, eight students.
Do you rent the property out back for weddings as well?
Absolutely.
So from weekly to, uh, thanks, because Halloween, we're pretty much booked every weekend, uh, for private rentals.
Thank you very much, that's a, that's a, thank you.
Uh, Mister.
I have no questions, great presentation, you're, you're a hundred percent right about the people coming out and seeing other places, because we get a lot of. Photography tourism and quite often they either coming from the mill or they're gonna leave our place and head to the mill. It's, it's good for, yeah, good job.
Thank you, uh, guys for the presentations, I have, uh, obviously there is lots of grants, especially now that's getting down to the nitty gritty for accessibility. Um, it was, I think brought out two thousand and five, isn't it? Two thousand and five to have everything ready by twenty twenty bucks, so. There's, uh, you know, you have your heritage, but, uh, there's a couple on the provincial grant, uh, that I looked up, uh. The, uh, age and friendly accessibility grants up to a hundred grand, that's provincial, and then there's a can, uh, uh, a federal one. Enable, enabling accessible funds, special, small projects, which is up to a hundred grand. So something that we should look into for sure, because. Um, because, uh, you know, and you're, you're almost there, I mean, sixty grand, I think, are you gonna go? Uh, that's one question I have. Elevator or lift? Or does it?
There's not a huge.
Like, say if, uh.
Fifty-five thousand versus ninety-five thousand?
Yeah, well, ninety-eight and eighty-five, let's say, so.
Um, the, the quote for the lift is a year old, so I don't even have things changed since then. Um, the quote for the elevator is within the last fifty days of the boat, so we may need to get another pick and for the lift. Um, our, our thinking is, you know, uh, which, which is best in the environment, it's not, uh. In our, uh, temperature controlled, you know, keeping the fire machine there, so we're speaking with the manufacturers to find out, uh. Which environment, that, which equipment would be best in that part.
Good, thank you, and we'll see you, yes, oh, sorry, and, uh. Our C E O, yes. And trillion, that's right too, but I think the, the accessible ones you should really shoot for, because that's what it's all about. And, you know, when they see the mill, tourism, accessible, everything works in. So, something to think about, so, I'll give you that information, while it's on, actually, it's just on the website. So thanks again for coming, and we'll see you in March, I guess, back at, uh. April, sorry, April, April. Thank you, thank you, uh, Ms. Clerk, thank you. Now, you guys can stay through the torture, or you can leave, it's your call, or I mean, to, to the meeting. Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Now we're on to six, is, uh. Consent agenda, I've been listening to the consent agenda, I consider routine and no longer require further discussion and act with one motion. The exception is ruled that the member. That a member may request that one or more ones be pulled for discussion and voted on separately. Is there any consent agendas that wants to be pulled?
Uh, so I would like to pull out, uh, six A, fourth quarter building report. Uh, just for, uh, kind of some discussion, that's the first thing I'm thinking of.
Okay. Do I need paperwork on that, pull that out? Or are you gonna give it to me, or are you gonna put it on?
Um, so we look for, uh, the room secretary to, uh, create the revenue to, uh, on the presentation that.
So can I continue on with the, with the rest, like to get a move in a second, or B, C, D, and E and F right now? So may I have a mover? And a second there, for the consent, V, C, D, E, and F, G, and H. For, and that's B, fourth quarter bylaw report, C, council reimbursement quarter. Fourth quarter fire report, fourth quarter operation report, twenty twenty-three M T O report. Twenty twenty-three Prescott annual water report, and the twenty twenty-three stormwater management report. Move by Mister Martel, and second by Mister Smell. All in favor? So we'll go to. Um, what we'll do is we'll go to six A, we'll make, uh, six A, the fourth quarter building report, is that okay? Or should I go down further? Yes. Okay.
Then the item referring to is the fifteen, the last fifteen A.
Sorry?
Six A?
Yeah. Okay. So we're going into number seven, the support tax credit increase. For volunteer firefighters, and that is Council Ward.
Go ahead, Mr. Ward. Uh, I came across this, I guess, in correspondence, I wanna say, actually, several months ago now, um, and I, and I keep seeing, uh, more and more townships. Um, that are, that are bringing it forward as well and supporting it, um. And essentially, it's, it's talking about, uh, volunteer firefighters, and I guess currently they have, I've given the numbers, and I don't know if they're in here. Um, three thousand, I think it's three thousand right now, and they want to increase up to ten thousand for, uh, tax credit, federal tax credit. For volunteer firefighters, and I mean, we are definitely a township who, you know, has a hundred percent, uh, you know, well, not a hundred percent. But we have a lot of volunteers out there, most of our firefighters is volunteers, uh, and, uh, you know, and, and we thank them, we have. Some ways to thank them, obviously, and I just think this is another way to, to show our support for them, because I think it's, it's certainly my, whether they're, they're using their time. Giving up their free time to help us out, and, uh, we appreciate it, and I think we should support this much. So, or this, this, um, sort of support this, uh, letter of support, so.
Any comments, questions on that? Uh, Chief, I got a couple, but, um. From three thousand to ten thousand, and you need, uh, what, two hundred hours, do we have a lot of our firefighters in that, like over the two hundred hours? Just tax credit, three thousand tax credit, if two hundred hours volunteer service were completed and accounted here, we have a lot. It's on that two hundred?
Uh, Mister Chair, um. I would say it's rare that we would have somebody achieve two hundred hours, a little more common now, maybe with, but the sort of, you can change any reporter, but.
Right.
Uh, outside of that, it would, it would be very rare.
Okay.
Uh, not impossible, but we've had a handful.
Right. And that's what this, and that's what this is all about, it's going from three, going from three thousand to ten thousand with two hundred hours or more. This is what that, unless you can help me out here, Mister C E O.
Uh, well, Mister Chair, I, I, I will, yeah, I believe that if you are under the two hundred. Hours, that the tax credit is a thousand dollars. Currently, is it, is it a thousand dollars, if you can, that.
Two hundred?
Above two hundred.
It's a three thousand?
Yes, it will call it a triple, if, if it was going to, uh, to, uh, actually, three thousand.
Okay.
I would. I would think that you would, uh, you, you might want to consider a ten. The tax credit should be that regardless of two hundred hours.
The ten thousand? You've been going.
I think, I, I think we move, um. The benchmark of needing to, to, to enjoy the two hundred hours before you move to, to the three down on this next credit.
Yeah, and, yeah, because there's, how many firefighters?
It could be, like, whether it's fifty hours or less.
Exactly.
Should be, it should be a, you know, a threshold.
But a lot smaller threshold than two hundred dollars.
Correct.
So I wanted to.
It would be, it would be one thing with under two hundred hours, that credit can be up to three thousand, and then over, over two hundred, maybe north of ten thousand.
So this resolution, can we help them add on that? Because I mean, for us, it's, it's.
You know, you can, you can support, you, you need to support that resolution, but you can also, and, and create, create your own resolution. That's, that's the one.
Or two hundred hours, like, uh, the chief said, what's, what's average, chief? Say in a year, say, I'm a firefighter. Two years' experience, show up there, we want, show up to meetings.
Mister Chair, I would say, uh. Probably a hundred and fifty hours for one of our more active members would be, kind of an average.
So, we don't have to do it this meeting, but I think it's something we should look at, maybe doing it. Like, well, seventy-five would be fair enough, wouldn't it?
And, uh, if, 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 if the chair.
Wouldn't we do that, would the staff look into, you know what we're on, in the meantime, can we? Can we, uh, uh, support this resolution? I guess all we have to do is sign on to it, right? It's, we don't need. We just send it off, that we sign on, yes, go ahead, Mister, Mister Clerk.
Being a resolution support by a, a new one, I'm feeding for these different standards of hours versus. Dollar amount, or are we, or research in that line, that we can do, uh, a resolution.
Yeah. So do we, uh, do we make a motion here tonight that we will support Bonfield Township?
By extension to staff when they appear. Whatever needs of sheets.
Very good, okay, that, uh, through the chair, I've actually, uh, I, I like where the conversation went with regards to these hours as well, so I'd like to see if you can get something.
And use something a little bit about it.
Yep, sounds good.
So, staff, you have enough information of what council directed?
I, I, I believe so, Mister Chair, we, we, we would really want to, to, perhaps.
Thank you, thank you so much. Thank you. Uh, we're gonna go to eight A now, fourth quarter building report. Is, who's, are you gonna talk on that?
Do, do the, uh. Building report of the. Or, like, uh, your, your sources.
No, we're gonna go the, we're gonna go to the fourth quarter building report, right? That's what we're going on, the fourth quarter building report, concern one. This is on page two.
Okay, since highlighted, uh, to the chair, uh, first report is, uh. It's, it becomes up the, um, for, yeah, there's no, the entire year. Uh, and seeing the, uh, value of building permits. Have come, have come down, and it's basically because, uh, we don't have, they, we don't have the starts that we have in the past. About a couple of years, but those notice that the, uh, cost of construction. Uh, to, uh, we know here that we built, uh, ten last homes, the same value as twenty-eight for a year before. So, um. They should be, I think a lot of the reason why we're not finishing, I would say. They're gonna do the cost of labor and the cost of, of.
Thank you, Mister Crawford, any questions, comments on that?
Uh, so, yeah, so I, I had this pull from consent agenda, Mister Crawford, and I was, I was concerned about the same thing you saw where. You know, if I do the rough math, and I'm just taking the total value of new homes, if I buy my number of homes. You know, in twenty twenty-two is about four hundred and thirty-three thousand dollars for the cost of an aver- average cost of a home, and then. Uh, in twenty twenty-three, it jumped up to six hundred and thirty-four thousand, so roughly a fifty percent increase. And, and I don't need an answer to that, in fact, I think you should, maybe if there's some research can be done, that'd be great, um, do we know if it's, if, if that's truly cost? Only, um, how do I say this? If it's truly cost, construction cost increases, or if it's, you know, maybe it's a different market, maybe these eighteen homes were much bigger homes, and maybe. So there's a square footage factor maybe in there, so, um, I would love to know about that at a future meeting. Um, and then the other thing that I, that I see is that, um, the industrial wise, uh, we had zero industrial permits, uh, last year. And do we know of anything, uh, and again, if you don't have an answer off, then hopefully can get it for later. Uh, do you know of anything that's, that's on the, it's on the horizon, that's coming for, uh, industrially, you've been made of, made aware of so far?
Uh, I know that there's, uh. With industrial projects, uh. Both about, I don't know whether it's safe or it's different. Work on the, the preparation.
Mr. Crawford, sir, thank you very much, appreciate that.
Uh, Mr. Smell. And Mr. Martell.
No, sir.
No questions? Okay, then we'll move on to. Eight I, which is again you, uh, Mr. Crawford and your building department report.
I don't, uh, to the chair, I'm not sure if everybody did have a chance to look at the report. But, uh, those are the parts I prepare before every year on the building project. Uh, of building product activity and, and purpose is, it's actually the correct asset supply are building permits base. And if you look at the report here, it's, uh, I summarize, I summarize their building permit activity over the last five years. And, uh, I tried to come up with, uh, a, uh. Fair, uh, reason for why our current value is so high. And it's basically, it's basically supported on fact that, uh, our department, even though we don't have. A lot of activity that drive that generates revenue. We have a lot of activity that. Creates a lot of expense.
Yeah.
And if you look at table number four, which is, which is an additional, but they're trying to justify some of the other expenses that we, we incur. As a department, we can generate revenue. I'm sure if I take a look, serious, a more serious look at it, it probably finds one.
So that's why it's important to keep our. Our prices for, for our building where they are, because if we do reduce them. To make it cheaper maybe for the residential, it, it costs us more. I mean, it, our, our building, I mean, help me out here, uh, staff, but the building. Department is supposed to pay for itself with stock, with the building permits and so on, what we take in.
That's correct.
That's how it's supposed to work. The last couple of years it hasn't. So if we start reducing. We just increased them in twenty twenty-three, so we wouldn't want to touch them, to me. In this time of year to reduce, you know, to think that we're gonna get more building because it's gonna be cheaper. I don't think that's a, I don't think that's an answer.
It doesn't work that way.
Or a quick fix, you know?
I try to go through the years. Different ways of trying to generate more building permits. And changes in building permits, neither the town will. And beyond that, I've never got a person or a contractor with a developer's claims, but our.
Great to know.
Mr. Ward. Thank you very much. Um, so through the chair, and I can't remember if I asked this last year, I might have just had a thought and there, there came out of my mouth, to be honest. Uh, but with regards to, with regards to your, um, uh, let's call it your, your other expenses. But what I'd love to see, if possible, is, um. Uh, is, 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 you know, you did a good job of segregating things, but, you know, I would, I would like to see if we can, you know, dive into that a lot deeper and see what the true. Uh, true costs we incur are, because I also think that there's a conversation to be had about, um, that, you know. Uh, we're not supposed to go over budget to the, to the deputy mayor's point, um, on your, your revenue cannot, you're supposed to exceed your revenue for the building permit. But there's a lot of non-permitted things that you do, um, that, that shouldn't be factored into that dollar, and I know it's been there for, for years. And I think maybe now is the time to make sure we look, look at this more in depth, to make sure we're not, we're not penalizing, uh, your, that part of your department, because you're having to incur. Non-valuated, non, non-funded tasks essentially through there. And it might become a budgeting issue, a budget conversation down the road for that, that, that difference of things that you can, um, but you might comment there, um. Uh, because when you look at, if you look at, uh, right now, just look at the last five years and you, when you progress that further out to your point. Um, you know, based on the permit fees we've been achieving thus far. Um, there's not a chance based on the, based on your expenses that you're ever going to be able to achieve that at this point in time, so. You know, we gotta take a look at this and, and try and find a way to, uh, to understand this and, and, um. I say fix the problem, but I have a feeling the fix might come from realizing that there's a whole bunch of stuff that you shouldn't be charging, should be charged against this metrics, so.
Well, to help you out on that, Mr. Lord, on page seventy-one, it does give us a pretty good breakdown of, of the process of the building permit. Uh, I don't know where you can cut any more corners or to. Oh, that's for another day.
No, no, I was talking about the other expenses that are not related to these, to be honest, right? So, yeah, you know, the things like we just talked about, that, uh, that the CBO talked about here. Um, this thirty-six thousand is a good start, like I said, I suspect there's more and, uh, but, uh, and I think actually more than that. Uh, I believe that, uh, the CBO alluded to that, that this is a, this was a quick look and I'd like to see what a deeper dive would tell us, because I think that's money that shouldn't be, um. Factored into that equation, to be honest, so.
But we are in the, uh, from, from, from the building permits. We are, uh, in the ballpark of other municipalities. If not cheaper.
We're, we're, we're a little bit on the high end, but at the same time, uh, as you said, I think other than that, we're not.
Right, like, so Dundas is forty-two fifty, we're thirty-three forty-one, so. And, and, and to your point. There hasn't been any contractor or any home builder has complained about. The building charges that we charge. Mr. Smell?
No, that's good, that's, that's some good questions.
Is it my couch? Okay, is that all, Mr. Ward? Thank you very much, Mr. Crawford, well done, thank you. Uh, there's no recommendations on that. For our information, so we'll move on to AJ. AJ is a council chambers audio visual system. Who's gonna speak on that? I would dare say our CEO.
Mr. Chair, I would like to refer to our work.
Oh.
And most of the background will respect this.
I'm sorry, Ms. Clerk.
Um, so this is the background, um, prior to our. Campaign re-creation set up. Um, our last couple of chambering operated with three big five-inch TVs, a small camcorder and was snowballing, there's more to what we have now. Um, throughout the process, um, we'll counsel the staff to identify with a brand new system that. As my home has been, as we can fit within our confines. Um, will identify as a priority, um, we have identified certain areas, um, to wireless microphones. Um, areas that delegation could be that you would be able to work live screen. Um, capture anything online cameras, display on multiple large TVs for allocations, where the rest of the meetings go live. Um, installation training, um. Strategy and this about being able to vote on live screen and have everything captured throughout the whole. Um, we requested quotations from five, five different companies that we know that have worked with similar systems. Uh, with various, various levels of government. Um, from those quotes, we only received three and only two were actually within the call, I believe, as one did not include any installation setup training. So. The rest of it was great, but it does not meet what we're looking for. Um, that was the lowest it might have visual. The mid bit, which was actually below us, that meet all our criteria, so it was by a cycle. Um, they gave, uh, three thousand two hundred dollars. Um, one of the longest thing that was an additional seven thousand four hundred dollars, that included licensing program. To enable, um, syncing of their system with our strike rule manager. Um, to the wireless main console, so that's an add-on feature, but it's still considered a lower level than. Uh, applied electronics by just, uh, the fast lives. Um, so that is an option that our staff do recommend incorporating that in. If you want an all-in-one system that is easily accessible, have already made a total of eleven or two, rather than operating two or three of a bunch. Um, with that, we sped, um, to have a all-in-one system that's fully integrated with Cyclone and eDrive and. Um, to meet accessibility standards to this current date and hopefully still in the next two, three years, I believe. Um, we are recommending to go with eDrive, which is our current agenda, meeting manager, report manager, rule manager, Elizabeth on one for the modules we have. Um, due to webcast module with YouTube, that enables, um, both efficiency and accessibility and the staff. Um, so what that will do is every time that we'll have a live stream meeting. Every time that we go into individual item on the agenda, I will pinpoint that live and that will capture in video. For future reference to the public that goes into it, rather than going through a full video. They can click on the link to that specific report in the agenda, they will take it directly to that, that discussion happens.
Oh, cool.
Um, so for the small dollar, it would be an annual cost of eDrive module of fourteen thousand three hundred ninety. On top of the rest of the system, which is the country. The current customer. Um, all of this combined is an estimated twelve, fourteen B process. Um, due to one of the, uh, a worthless to a company, then it takes the tech distribution company that they deal with. Um, at least a month or more to actually get all the products in. If everything comes in, I haven't all those fine vanishing right now. Um, they are looking off basically to be in, you know, mid-June hopefully. Um. Yeah, here it is. Right now, we do have some funding remaining in our modernization fund of just over ninety-four thousand, as well as. Been over a hundred forty-eight thousand from our, from the state start. Uh, but none of that has been committed right now. So our recognition is the council of audio visual system upgrade to Cyclone. Um, including the add-on option, um, for the vote to be a total of, could be taxed. One hundred and one thousand, three hundred eighty-five dollars, thirty-five cents. Plus an additional five, the contingency of five thousand sixty-seven dollars, thirty-seven cents to be funded by monitoring those with the community better. As well as purchase the eDrive webcast model for full of fourteen thousand three hundred and ninety annually. On a twenty twenty-four by a public safety restart, with future years be funded from the administration IT. And then authorized with other C O, actually almost straight up.
Thank you very much, uh, Ms. Clerk, for that. Um, any comments before, there is a recommendation. Uh, do you have any questions or comments on that, Mr. Ward?
No, I mean, we, we knew this was gonna be a ticket, I don't, it's gonna come here and, and, uh, you know, I mean, it's, it's, it's time to be, I'm starting to join that century, obviously, and then. You know, the technology is, is, is there, it's needed and, and, uh, you know, it's, it's, it's there for, you know, making sure that people, uh, that. That our constituents get informed, it's also there obviously for, 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 you know, our protection as far as documenting and, and I think we should have this. Um, the one thing that I'm a little sitting on the fence about, uh, is actually the eDrive webcasting at this time, I'm not sure. Um, the value, we know, we don't have a lot of views on our website, for instance, but, but, you know, um. I'm, I'm, I'm sitting on the fence, I'll see what everybody else at council says about that, but I just, you know, is it, is it worthwhile based on, based on our viewership, for instance, is one of the things that concerned me a little bit about that, that expense and so, because, um. You know, uh, essentially it comes down to probably about, uh, four hundred and some odd dollars a meeting essentially if we kept, we can just. Sort of have that thought of that, that's all, so.
Mr. Smell? I just have one question for the clerk to. You were explaining, but I'm not quite sure, I don't know, what's the difference between the Cyclone and the Applied Electronics?
The chair, they're different IT.
That's all? Okay.
Certainly, yes.
Okay.
Mr. Martell?
Two, one question, can, will this be able to tie into our Zoom capability and?
Mr. Chair, that is correct, it's all the same, what we got going for. So the Zoom will be incorporated and then eDrive, we go with that module, we incorporate it, so that way everything is one shot. And stop and then that will be more, so right now we're at the basics. Uh, where we record, we edit, um, if we incorporate the different modules. We don't have to do all that editing, we just, as we're going through with our manager, we'll pinpoint exactly what happens when. And we'll still report, we'll still have the A T R M reported for, um, backup for integrity commissioner, for conduct needs. Uh, it pretty much meets everything, the only difference between the two companies is what the difference of quotes were, as well as different items that were quoted within. Um, so Cyclone was not only a little bit buried in mine, it was, uh, cheaper, but they did incorporate, um, the add-on features. Uh, voting mechanism as well as the, um. More advanced, um, recording, uh, for the mic system. Um, that the applied electronics did, it was this basic one where you push it and go, the. Uh, Cyclone has the voting feature as well as, uh, speed features, different things that we'll get to learn from.
Thank you. No, beyond that, through the chair, I'd share council awards concerns that eDrive, I'm not a hundred percent sure convinced we're gonna get our value of that. Especially in the first couple of years, you know, and as we grow and look at that, right? It does seem excessive for, for our capability at this point.
Go ahead.
One benefit is open is that it will be Zoom live streaming and we'll be doing that all through the same source. Um, rather than us running an additional source through Cyclone and then through Zoom to try and incorporate that live streaming. As well as the added security feature with eDrive, they have a server that'll be put in place in our office. As a backup and then they back every recording up to the cloud, secondary source checkup. We're right now, um, Zoom deleted in thirty days and now it's being put on our drive. We don't have our server, as opposed to an individual drive that I have set up. So that's the back end.
Uh, go ahead, Mr. Ward.
Uh, okay, so, um, uh, I, I've been considering this, I guess, obviously, so, uh, maybe. As a counterproposal, and, and maybe I can get Mr. Martell's support on this. Uh, what if we decided to do two and then review this again in a year to make sure that we did get our value for this dollar, so that we can decide on whether we renew it or not?
So in this price, uh. Ms. Clerk is, in this price fourteen, uh, thousand, is that included for this year? Fourteen three ninety? Okay, and then in twenty twenty-four, it would come out under.
Under it was.
Right, so we can, we can run it to, we can run it for this year. If everything works well, we can say, go ahead.
And potentially in future years, we do not, my law will say restart.
Okay. So can I, can I leave that in there, uh? People? Do we, yes, go ahead, uh, Mr. CEO.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, just, just, one, one of the items that we. Automate this, this, this feature was that, um. With, with respect to residents, that they, they may be unlikely to watch a three-hour, uh, video recording.
And we can go right.
Where, where here, we're anticipating that with that may increase our activity, if there's like. One or two or three items that they really wanted to actually. You know, view and, and get a better understanding for, and, and, and part of that feeling was that they would be more willing to. Oh, I have to take seven minutes to end up lying, right? As opposed to trying to. We through three hours of, 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 of video, we thought about this going to be really a nice type of feature that. That had the potential to actually increase that viewership, which, you know, I, I, I think we would all want to, we would all want to see. Maybe, maybe we'll get to a point where they're very interested in watching three hours.
That's not, I'm not even sure we're interested in that at all. As I can find sometimes go back now and it's a pain.
It, it.
We're ruthless. I'm not gonna watch myself, the box for sure.
That, 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 for the, for the, uh, process.
Right, could I convince you?
Yeah, no, I'm convinced, like I said, I'm okay with the entire recommendation for this year, but I would like to review the cost again.
And, and what about you, Mr. Martell, could we swing it?
I'm happy with that, I'm sure.
So here's a recommendation that the committee recommends of council, one, board, council chamber audio visual system upgrades contractors, Cyclone. So here's a recommendation that the committee recommends of council, one board, council chamber audio visual system upgrades contractors, SciCom. Solution, including the add-on option, a total one hundred one thousand three hundred fifty-five plus an additional five. Chris contingency of five thousand sixty-seven dollars and seventy-seven cents. With the cost to be funded by combination modernization reserve fund and the COVID safe restart fund. And two, purchase the describe webcasting plus no modular per total fourteen thousand not three hundred ninety dollars and. Funded by the twenty-four COVID safe restart fund with future years funded from the administration IT service seventeen dash five three two four. And three, authorize a clerk and the CEO to execute all necessary documents to complete the auto visual system program. I like one question before we think about, when will this be done? July one, Canada Day?
After reported, until the end of this month, they're approximately going twelve fourteen B. So their. Their goal is mid-June, but they, again, it's based on their distributor.
Okay, so Canada Day be a nice. Recommendation? All in favor? Oh, no, sorry, I need a mover. All the way by Mr. Warren, second by Mr. Smell. All in favor? Carry. Well, that's good. Uh, AK is disposal surplus goods. Uh. Chief, are you speaking on this?
Yes, sir.
You're on, buddy.
Uh, we have some equipment that comes surplus for a need. Including two thirty-one new cameras and fifteen sets of firefighter bunkers here. The thermal cameras updated last year uh using funds raised during our state of the COVID races. And other donations that were made from the fire department. All of the bunkers here is expired, so it is more than ten years old. Uh, certainly they have the game in the most current gear, uh, another ride to size that we do last spare and training recruits. So I would say they have at least fifteen to twenty sets left over after we donate this fifteen sets, so we have lots of those fire. Uh, and just coincidentally, a couple of weeks ago, I had a representative stop by from firefighter for their quarters. And they are a nonprofit organization that that helps firefighters in Canada and around the world. Um, they help refurbish and refurbish valuable firefighting equipment to build firefighting capacity in communities around the world. Uh, I will not read through the policy implications from our procurement policy. But under financial, based on a search of the last year on golf deals, uh, those are the numbers that I would estimate. Uh, we we would get through the items at at Oxley's. Uh, and to just be clear, that expired bunker, we're paying eighteen sets has to hold for all fourteen sets. Anywhere from thirty-five to forty-five dollars a set is what this up for. We're looking to buy one for himself. So a few uh few options, we can donate everything to the fighters for their orders. Uh, we can sell everything through through golf deals. Or we can donate the bunker gear to firefighters for their orders and sell the thermal linkage cameras on golf wheels. Uh, my recommendation is the third one, uh, the cameras are easy to package and to put up. Obviously, the fifteen set of bunker gear is very faulty and would be. I think one last one, we were, fire department, we're.
We have three options, gentlemen. One, two, and three, you read your packages. Is there any particular ones you'd like to choose?
Uh, I just have a question, actually.
Yeah.
Uh, I guess question to the fire chief, is it just one of each of those cameras? Is that what I'm seeing as well, or is it multiple of those?
Uh, through through the deputy mayor, yes, it's one of each, two of them are models. Uh, the first one has to be. Monkey, last year's old, the second one is, I think about fifteen.
Uh, fair enough. And then the other question I had is um, uh, with regards to firefighters without borders. How to delegate that? So I'm assuming that they they helped whatever is a fire department in real need and then. You know, don't maybe have the budget or something like that, that they really support. That's what they kind of support is doing it that way and they. Provide for these departments like that as a true statement or close enough?
Uh, through the deputy mayor, I I believe a lot of the uh. The the bunker gear has a lot of material, it's a lot of the prepared past ten years. So whether it goes east or or some of that, or I think a lot of those go overseas as well, just to the country that that struggle with the person.
Okay, and so o- o- on that assumption, I mean, we're talking about four hundred and fifty to seven hundred and fifty dollars that we could make off of these things. I'm I'm actually just as in favor of option one, to be honest, giving it all to firefighters of the borders and see if we can help somebody who who really needs it instead of that. The highest bidder on our cameras, but that's just my 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 opinion on that one, so.
Mr. Smell?
Yeah, I think number one would be the great idea. People that are in need.
Mr. Martel?
Oh, I like number one, but I also like uh. Trusting in our staff, so I'm gonna recommend the recommendation, number three.
How do we uh? The recommendation says option two, do I need a uh to move that option three to option one?
Through the chair, there's more space. If there's a consensus that would be a friendly change, doesn't have to be on the table where. You usually walk a number out. Um, if somebody puts it on the table, I've already written with off number three. Um, then someone can also make it a mandate motion.
Okay. Yeah, I have a recommend, okay, the recommendation is the committee recommend the council declared above mentioned items as surplus to need attention. An authorized staff to dispose the goods as per option three. Do I have a mover? Do I have a second? fails.
I I would like to propose that we change it to option number one.
Do do we have to?
Uh, we gotta do something.
Just a friend, this is just a friend, so we didn't get the, we didn't get the to move this option three. So we just make another recommendation of option one.
So I'd like to put that forward.
Okay, many recommends of council declares above mentioned art surplus needs attention and authorized staff to dispose the goods as per option one. Do I have a mover? Secondary, all in favor? Okay. Uh, live barn video system for Cardinal Arena, I do believe, Mr. Spencer, is that yours?
Okay, so this, thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, Live Barn is a a live video streaming service that. Has made its way uh into Ontario, into the number of occupants. Um. They are, they originate, they originate out of the US, but they are here in Ontario and Canada and um. What it does is if. It's high quality streaming, uh, it's basically one camera that's situated in circle face of the arena. And it's propped to follow the puck and the motion of where the players are. So it actually very rarely are you not getting the the live action of the uh. They have uh in, as I indicated here, they have currently a number of religions and bottom of the bells. As well as a number of smaller municipalities are starting to put it in. Um, Live Barn made a presentation to VTO, which is the hockey in Ontario. In January, trying to to gain up some support. So now minor hockey associations are going back to their municipalities or. The companies that they deal with or private individual reasons uh looking to keep. Support to get installed in the arenas. There's no cost to the municipality um for the service of installing within the arena. Um, the camera work and all the IT stuff is all done at the expense of Live Barn. Um, they have their own dedicated internet line that will be brought into the arena. So it doesn't interfere with our current internet feed into the facility that has its own. Um, the video one is done in thirty-minute segments. So every thirty minutes it stops and then and then starts another recording. So if there's, let's say there was a SciCom two-hour hockey game. Then you would be able to want seven to nine, we'd be four to eight segments. You can picture where you wanted to do, you can watch the recording, you can go back, you can make clips. What a lot of the higher um caliber associations are doing, they're using this. For their tracking and their development for their their teams and their players. For ours, um, online style and whatnot. So the different tracking that can be done if you have a membership. Uh, the membership is a monthly membership or yearly membership. So the individual that wants to watch it from home would have to buy into the membership. Uh, the cost, as I indicated, for the municipality is nothing. We would average between a thousand and four thousand dollars per year revenue for it. That would, the high end would be more people obviously signing up for the membership. The municipality would have a number of three accounts. So we would be able to have access and we would more than likely have it on our screen. For someone that may not be able to go into the area. The one caveat is currently right now both arenas, Snatchwell and Cardinal have a live stream on camera. Um, not the highest quality, but it's there. Um, if Live Barn goes to be installed in the Cardinal Arena, that live streaming would have to be shut off. There would be, there's no negotiation with that. But if ours is on, there is won't be installed.
Mr. Ward? Mr. Ward?
Uh, well, I hadn't understood that part of it, to be honest, before. And I don't have time or capacity and I'm afraid I might turn the seven into my accident. I don't know what kind of viewership we are to get on. So I spend it once in a while, I take a look there, you know, it's just because I pick it on, like, but I'm looking for a counseling for instance, but uh. I don't know what our viewership is like, um, YouTube. Do we know this, do we know what it is like right now or?
Uh, through the chair, we do not track those numbers. You can log into the to the site, my login right now. It would show that there's currently sixteen people here, but there's not a ongoing toll. But as I indicated, the quality is, is not okay with them.
No, and I can appreciate that. I was more concerned about, you know, um, if people suddenly had to pay to watch, you know, their kids have the emergency home or something like that. Uh, what's what's the potential, I guess, backlash, might be the term. Uh, we're looking at from that perspective, right? You don't have any idea what the annual or the monthly fees are usually charged?
Yeah, the monthly fee is nineteen ninety-five. And there's, I I I believe you can get one month out of the way. Now, the difference between what's the the current live webcams that we currently have in both facilities do not. Monitor the whole way service. So for example, if the green button. If you're standing, if you can't keep the left-handed corner, doesn't get, doesn't get picked up on either camera. Where this device would pick up the entire solo of the ice cream.
It's kind of a great, a cool, a cool uh, cool device to be honest, like I said, and uh. Yeah, to see what everybody else has to say about it, because.
Mr. Smell?
Yeah, I have a couple of questions, uh. Deputy Mayor Kate, Mike. If the assistance put in and someone uh is a member and they can watch it at home, is what you're saying?
Correct.
So can they copy that?
Yeah, so I can log into it now.
Yeah, but I mean, can they keep that once they get it home? Like, if you know, you record a movie or a reporter?
Yeah.
So they can keep that?
Yep.
Great idea.
Oh, I'm sorry. No, 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 they can't record. You can go on and view the course. You don't have the option. You can download thirty-second clips. So if there was something that you wanted to highlight, let's say to grandsons. You go on and clip a thirty-second clip and it will get emailed. Doesn't give you the option to record the whole, if you can't record the whole two out of eight.
So how how, like, uh, say you're a hockey coach?
Yeah.
And you get home and you wanna watch the game?
Yep, he would just log in, he would watch it. I could log into the sense flash right now, watch anything that's on right now. It's not specific to just the ingredient. If you have a a live barn account, you can watch any arena that has. Toronto, anywhere, states, anywhere.
I'm just thinking how great it would be for coaches to put the higher level team.
Well, that's what they are using those right now as a lot of the.
Okay, great, thank you.
Mr. Martel?
Yeah, through the chair and through our creation, would this go, it would be recording the entire time the arena is open?
Right.
Would we have the ability to turn it on and off?
Um, we do, yes.
I'm just wondering, I know they don't play there now, but somebody like Lucas Stitt, is he gonna be losing revenue? Because people will have to buy tickets to come and see his team now, they can just watch him on the computer?
They don't play there.
I I understand that, but. I'm just saying, we have events, you know, we do sell tickets to.
Yeah, those events, you wouldn't be shy to the model.
So you'd be able to, if the Rangers were playing there, I could watch it from my place.
That's correct.
If you remember.
If you have an action.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Go ahead.
Uh, so anybody, the parents will watch this, and so I had to scout us, just go to watch this as well, like, is this a potential where we can get some of our? Some more of our talent out there to the NHL and things like that?
I I would say, in a job, when the stairs definitely, I know, uh, a lot of the O H L sports. Uh, and material too, which is great. A lot of those games have accounts through the hockey TV, but it's only through the live line. So they are watching.
Same, we going out in the cold winter night.
My friend, and the quality is good and it does follow the. It does follow the the actual play. Um, which is obviously a different party.
Right.
Yeah.
Are you going, uh, Mr. Ward?
I just, and so the last one, um, the six-year contract with clauses to opt out. Uh, so what if we, you know, try this and next year we have lots of complaints because people can't access the video, for instance, of our own? Uh, what does the opt-out clause look like? Is it? Six months notice and no conditions are based on that? Okay, okay, thank you.
Um, Mike, with that. Twenty dollars a month and you're you're saying twenty dollars a month, can I go, say, from September to April? Or do I have to take it from September to September? I've seen the.
You want, if you want, you wanted to pay a monthly fee, then you were just paying six months or eight months or nine months of the year.
Okay, so you know, it's not a, like, it's not a month, it's not a yearly contract that I pay monthly.
You can do both.
Okay, okay, so I can do that eight months.
Not just for the ingredient.
No, it's for everyone's or whatever, anywhere that's on this program.
Cycle teams were trying to share.
Yeah.
You were able to watch.
Yeah. I I looked, I looked at it, I just complicated getting into it, that's all, like, I went to it.
It is, I use it all the time, for my volunteer stuff and I'm good.
No, just look, yeah, look, it's difficult to get into.
Once you're into it.
Okay.
And they have a uh very agile investment, I use it on their website.
Okay.
For people that were having issues.
Yeah, go ahead, Mr. Smell?
Uh, through the chair, Mike, I just wondered, uh, if we can make one thousand to four thousand dollars per year? How much is this uh company that's putting it in? Cause it's not costing that much to get it installed. What do they make it off of that?
They're making off of membership. Like, so if you're if you're buying six months of 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 membership, they're making that money.
So where's our revenue coming from then?
We get a percent of it, we get ten percent.
Oh, okay, all right. Fair enough, thanks.
Now, do we get ten percent across the board?
Ten percent of of the revenue that.
Right, and which means all, everybody, if there's a hundred people. We could tend to send it out twenty, okay. Um, there's no recommendation here.
The information.
Okay. So that's all this. Yes, go ahead, Mr. Martel, here on, through the chairs or anybody locally choosing this?
Currently, right now, I know that they are, they are approaching the number of municipalities. Um, I I think they can build sex class, four guys there, bridge class, sex class, and buy four guys in air magic. Um, but they just made a reservation in January to H U D, it's hockey in Ontario. Which all the official territory, which is from the upper part of the country. So they will be going into more rings in the company here. I think the push will be to have ready to go for September.
We would be looking at both arenas?
No, my recommendation would be just to put it in, uh, at the green on ring. The reason I say that is that, um, the Smutsville arena is utilized. But it's utilized more for practices.
Yeah, that's what I thought would be interesting.
Yeah, so it's, I just think
At this time?
Trying to put it in, in a location, um. It's about, they, they have to commit and they have to size up where the cameras actually go. And these, the ring in Smutsville is smaller, obviously than the green on. You know, it might be harder, harder to have a higher elevation level down to get the camera that's gonna show the whole area. But the bigger thing for me is that it's more of a practice facility and not a game facility.
Yeah, no, I agree.
That they would invest off, flip the money into, uh, doing the green on.
Are you coming?
Certainly approach them. But we won't have discussions about just, yeah, green on, because they know what, what teams play there.
Right.
The Cyclones.
Yeah.
And the double A leagues play there and that's.
Uh huh. Okay, are you coming back later date with the information or with a recommendation or?
Uh, no, there was an information. If you guys decide you wanna make a decision on that, then that's your prerogative to do that.
Yeah, yeah, but the, Mister Chair, I, I think the, uh, we wanted to, 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 to make you aware of
It's there.
This potential. Al- although, uh, I, I think from a staff perspective, we, we, we recognize that there is a system in place and it's just whether you want to, uh, we know that there, there is the potential for more, um, political ramifications if you move from a system where you can view at, at no charge, potentially the same. Now you're viewing for a monthly, for, for a monthly charge. And I don't think there's a, there's a blackout at, at that stage yet. Or is it, is it certainly the level, uh, of, of community councils to, to, to more actively pursue this, this option, would you, you would certainly?
I certainly think we should look at for next season for sure. Go ahead, Mister.
Uh, I, I was gonna say, is there a possibility that we can, uh, uh, maybe putting signs up or ideas up or something, collect some data maybe from the arena to see what, what, what users of the arena think about it? Just, you know, because I am a little worried that we do this and there'd be a lot of, uh, a lot of spill back to us if it's not like. But maybe you really want that. I, I, I'm not sure what the customer wants to hear, that's right, so.
I'm not, I don't know, so, please, society, go ahead.
I may just, so as indicated, as I, bottom of the report, like, the live webcam's reason they were installed was because of COVID.
Right.
When parents were not allowed to go to the arena.
Yeah.
Um, I do know people check to see if there's anyone on the ice to come for a crowd and stuff like that. But I, I don't know that there are individuals that are actually watching the whole game. Cause like I said, you don't get the whole game happening like in Green on Ring, there's two separate cameras. So if you're watching the camera at the red line, you're just basically seeing the, the operation, what's going on between the two blue lines. If you switch to the other camera, which is just a canteen then you're catching the area that goes out the ice, but if there's a player at the far end of the van boning?
Can't see.
You can't see it. So I, I don't know that there's actually anyone that is utilizing it for full game operational purposes of watching it, but I could be wrong, but I, I don't think there are any.
Is there any way we can bring this up, uh, on the call? Your recommendation?
I would think that it would be in the best interest of, of the township. If, if they want to put it in, they're gonna wanna do the setup in July or August, so that it's ready to go for September. They would wanna bring it in September and say
Can, can, can we bring it back in June?
We, we, we can, we can, in, in May or June, just to get
We'll have our folks come, so.
It, it'll give, it'll give time for, for members to to, to honor a little bit.
Yeah, I like it.
It appears like it will be a a much better experience for the, for, for the viewer than what we currently have now. It's just, it's now, it's now, who, who would be impressed?
No, I think, I think that we bring it back up in May, then the season. Um, I, I agree with Mike. I don't think anybody watches it myself. They might go and see if anybody's on ice, just for curiosity. Okay, thanks for the information. Okay, eight M, this one here. Blue box, chances. Mister C A O, are you speaking on this one?
I, I, I will be, uh, Mister Chair, just give me one second, please.
Sure, I'll give you more and more.
A little slower.
We're gonna take a five minute break. If we may. Yes, I remember. I knew everybody would go. Report back in a meeting at seven fifty P M. Thank you. We're on eight M. And I do believe our C A O is gonna be talking about this. Blue box.
Uh, thank you, Mister Chair. So just a little background, we are actually rapidly approaching the, uh, transition people producer responsibility. It was, uh, the provinces based that transition in over three years, um, basically starting in January twenty twenty three. Uh, and will be completed by December twenty twenty five. With our transition date, uh, scheduled for February second, twenty twenty five. So, um, and we were, we were required to provide an initial report back in September thirtieth of twenty twenty one. That is sort of, um, they're applying the, at a very high level of occupation, a number of problems that fall applied, uh, under the, uh, under the program. Uh, so that, uh, we, we made the provision of additional information for, uh, uh, circular materials, uh, to, um, look at the transitioning through an efficient and effective, uh, uh, plan in that transition period. Uh, last year, in, in twenty twenty three, uh, during the August timeframe, we were required to actually, uh, prepare another reform, the fall transition reform. And it, uh, gave some trailer, uh, detail with respect to, uh, the sort of the collection areas and, and what was done on, on Monday versus Tuesday. So that we get a, a, a more wholesome, uh, picture. We're now into the sort of that final, uh, stage where circular materials have reached out, uh, to see if the municipality is interested in opting in during the transition period or opting out during the transition period. So our transition period would be basically February twenty twenty five to December uh, thirty first, so to speak, twenty twenty five. Where after the, uh, sort of, we'll call it January first, twenty twenty six. There will be, I think, a service provider collecting the box material. But really, it, it is a matter of, um, uh, whether we would want to sort of, um, opt in and sort of continue, um, operating under a new, uh, agreement with the circular materials that would require us to need, uh, a statement of, statement of work. And some of, some of the concerns with, uh, opting, opting in with respect to during this, during this phase is that there are, there are certain thresholds that the municipality is going to need to meet. So it's basically, uh, equal to or less than sort of, uh, four percent contamination of, of the material being collected. So, um, for instance, a, um, unwashed plastic bottle within the, uh, actual blue bin. If that, if that's considered, that entire blue bin is considered contaminating. So it really would not actually take very much to, to reach over that four percent, uh, contamination threshold. And then there are actually penalties, uh, associated with going over that percentage. Um, so that's, that's, that's certainly one of the reasons why, um, we, we would not, uh, entertain a sort of a ten month period of, uh, of, of, of remaining in the, in the program where there are potential of that, uh, contamination penalties to, 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 uh, be implemented. Also, there would be that requirement that we would, that the, the material would have to be taken to a receiving facility. And not necessarily, it may, it may be Rockville, it may be, it may be some, it may be someplace else, so, uh, that's a, that, that's another concern. It would be one thing if we were operating completely in house, we had our own, we had our own vehicle, we had everyone else, it may, it may be something that we, that you may wanna consider, but we're knowing that. We're gonna be sort of the, the middle person with respect to, uh, our lack of curbside, uh, solid waste and blue rocks. And potentially there, there may be the requirement during that transition to, to have a second vehicle so that, number one, that, that you're, you're, you're not potentially contaminating, uh, blue rocks load with solid waste. Uh, of those things. So there's a, there's a number of variables that I just it, it doesn't give the feeling that it would be advantageous, uh, to the municipality to continue during, during this transition phase. It's actually potentially more of a liability in, in that, uh, aspect. And sort of the staff feeling this time is that we would be better served to, to focus the, the, the limited resources that we have on focusing on resident education uh, with respect to, to the, uh, by areas that will be coming down, uh, to the fight. And also the focus on, uh, currently our program, um, we've, we've been able to, to pick up, uh, in certain locations within, within the villages. So for instance, uh, Village Andrews, for example, that right now they're, they're encompassed with, you know, the, the current blue ox program. Uh, once this comes into effect, sort of in, in January first, twenty twenty six. As I say, Andrew, now they would not be in the local stop. So thi- this is something that from the, from a staff perspective, that we would uh, our feeling is that, that community health wants to continue sort of that a similar level of, 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 of service to, to, to the locations. And it's gonna take some time to figure out how we can encompass, uh, uh, some of those locations that previously ended up being included in, where there was a residence on top of the commercial business. We, we, we looked at it as residential. So it's going to be a little bit more, uh, strict and a little further with, with, with the producers taking, uh, taking over that full responsibility. So those are the two areas where we think we would, uh, we would be better served on the education end of it. Looking for solutions in some of those areas that, uh, like they have, like the municipal office wouldn't be included within the, within that new blue box machine. Really, the recommendation is that, that we signal the circular materials that, uh, we will, uh, opt out during that transition period. But that we would enter in with contract with, with, uh, circular materials contractor, that they would maintain picking up those locations at least to the end of, uh, of, of twenty twenty five. Giving us a, another opportunity to, to, to find another solution.
You're good?
I'm, I'm sure that there are plenty of questions and I will
Sure is.
I will do, I will do, I, I will do my best to, uh, to try to respond.
Uh, yeah, some of the conversations we get into, I, I never even would have thought there were businesses that just could put their blue bins out. I mean, I've had a few businesses I've been involved with over the years and, you know, there's always their own, you know, independent big giant boxes for cardboard and everything, recycling it. I didn't realize we're picking up businesses as well. I thought, I thought this concern is more about township, uh, you know, property garbage, if you will, and the recycling therein, so. Uh, no, I, I mean, I think you've, uh, educated me certainly a lot more than I, uh, expected. It was a question I had, so I'm delighted you were able to take, take that, take that ahead of time. So, no, I, I, I think, uh, as far as your recommendation goes, I a hundred percent support that, that because, uh, yeah, I mean, it's, 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 it's tough and I get that. And I don't mind supporting to, you know, transition to the end of twenty twenty five, but, um, uh, I, you know, it's, it's something that unfortunately businesses, I think, should be bearing and then that's what I'm gonna, like, presume we'll see what happens when we come back and, uh, later on, and let's guess your proposal on, on what the future looks like after twenty twenty five.
Yeah, and through, through, through the chair, it, it, just wanna, uh, clarify that it's not all businesses, but that would, that, that would be where, where, where there will be right now, like some mixed commercial residential or like uh, I would say those extremely small locations, like, let's say, um, Watts Small Engine would be, would be a good example to, to, to anticipate. For what they, for what they would generate, if, if it was, you know, just stop.
I mean, obviously there's, there's the tendency which we wanna avoid, obviously, that they'll just put things in a regular garbage at that point, but, uh, you know. You have a task to have in your future.
Yeah, through the, through, through the chair, I think that that will be the, um, one of the challenging parts, right? Because when, once you reach the, the, the transition period, uh, most likely the contractor, and it'd be the same if we were opting in together. Uh, be, be, because of the, of, of, of the contamination penalty, if you're seeing something, you're going to leave, you haven't made the entire but the fire department's not gonna separate, they're gonna, you can see, oh, I've got half of that, that's, that, that would be clean. So there's gonna be certainly influx of, well, we just made influx of potential products that if we're, if we're not really getting that message and everything, or to spend its time, the victims are third products, or are, are a little bit. I think that that's, we look at that as one of those areas that it, it's going to be a challenge. Um, I bet, I bet it's, it's, it's not going to be easy.
Mister Smell? Oh, yeah, I just have a concern, I guess, not quite a question. Uh, when, when the guys that come to pick it up and they class it as cannon contamination, they just leave it behind. So they're, it's their opinion right now, not nobody else's. So it's all I'm thinking of is like, say, Chief Wiz Jer, they'll probably be classes contamination, wasn't like that, right? Okay, so then the person is told, the phone finder, why it wasn't picked up, and they'll say, well, I seen a jam ax ball, it wasn't being known on Chief Wiz's ball. Then you send the people back, pick it up, it's clean. You know, like they're gonna well, like, it's gonna be very difficult to, to police, very difficult.
Certainly, certainly anticipated that it, that, that this one would be a challenge. That's, and, and, and that's one of the primary reasons of the why, uh, for, that, that we rely as often.
I, I'm for the recommendation.
That's, uh, because it, it, it
You and I done that before.
It, it, it might be extremely challenging, uh, you know, we can focus our efforts on that.
Education.
Education piece and, 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 and some other. I think, so that, so that we can, right? We, we, we got this message, you know, and with all those wanting to uh, circular materials or at least their contract, it's picking up something that's you have, you have a frustrating part to like, with potentially opting in and the need potentially for a vehicle, there's gonna be vehicles and then we're going, there, there, there's potential that we're getting complaints on something that we didn't have any control.
over. So it is to that end, it's
Because I don't know who picks up Prescott's recycling, but I know definitely their friends up there. They don't take it and then within a week, the people that weren't given to take it, they're cleaning up their mess and putting in the proper stuff. So but it's still, that's gonna go off of their while. I don't know, I I believe the recommendation.
They think and it the 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 sorry, imagine what what they're getting instead of that shower, but we talked about it as well. So if they didn't want to see is it's not like money, because let's say you talk items, it's like, well, I'm not gonna wash it again, and you just go to the bad. For great, well, we're we're kind of defeating that whole
Purpose.
Purpose of what what we're trying to accomplish. So yes, it's it's many, many, many facets.
Mr. Martel?
Uh through the chair, certainly support the recommendation, advise us some time. The other thing we have happening is a new transfer tape station, correct, where we can throw in some auctions for business if you you know, look at what we're building for transportation, have that time that we need a a recycling for business. Yeah, not just preface that. So, yeah, I like the recommendation.
Go go ahead, Mr. Sh.
I tell the purchase point that that might bring a little bit into that whole situation is to get that the message across. If you're not recycling properly, that's going into the regular garbage and and taxpayers pay for that regular garbage. So they're gonna have more garbage to pay for.
And would defeat the bag still the bills. Or defeat the purpose of really what the earth to do, so. Okay, any more questions, sir?
Uh, no, I think that was well done.
I uh you gotta give me a rundown here. Uh right from the start. So right now, we have the people from Cornwall, the blue box. Right? They pick it up, they take it where? Moose Creek, Brockville?
Uh I believe that maybe how we're from Rockville to to to
This is for recycling. So it's on February. This is just for recycle items. It's not for garbage too. It's just to recycle. Is that right? And it's not green box either for cardboard. It's just for recycling.
Green box, so sure, green box and possible.
Both.
Yes, could do one one week, one for next.
Okay, just the way we're doing it now.
Yes.
So when we become February twenty fifth, we opt out. Who does it? February twenty fifth, twenty twenty five. Who does it?
So uh what what
Same company?
Uh Potentially. Uh it it's it's hard to say right now. Uh we're we're required to uh to know about certain materials uh later this month. We start by whether we're opting in or opting out. And then I think the um problem and then by the end of one, it will be I think you'll be a tender for 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 those services in 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 the areas of 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 the municipalities that that are opting out. Uh in in that regard, so as it currently sits right now, uh we can't comfortably say who would be uh contracted to be picking uh up the recycle uh with in 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 February twenty twenty five. And the the other caveat with respect to that is that uh the solid waste, curbside solid waste uh collection uh our our term with uh with H T C would would end with February uh twenty twenty five. One of the reasons that that we that we had done that was as we were leading into this this entire transition, we really had to go and deal with what it was really going to look like. Uh so one of the other things that we may need to be looking at coming the in the summer is uh if the contractor that would be picking up, we'll say, blue ox materials also provides solid waste collection, there may there 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 may be, it may be worthwhile to 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 look at uh having the same contractor to do those new services. So it looks a little bit more eager or to 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 the residents than potentially have two different vehicles collecting two different two different products. In fact, that may end up that way as it is. Unfortunately, I wish uh I think we all would have a clearer picture of how how it's going to 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 end up. There will be there will be a few more reports coming forward to to make it last this year.
Yeah, so right now we have uh we're the same company, same day pick up our our solid waste and our recycling or cardboard every other remain evidence, right?
Correct, in in a single
And it works good, single vehicle.
Uh in in uh I would say just both, I guess, pleasure of all in Spain, so.
Right. So this circular uh materials company, what they're the head of it in Ontario? Is this what this is all about? They're gonna sub out to maybe H T C? Is that?
So certain certain materials is to with respect to sort of problems or what I think what waste occurring material uh potentially was. So really, the they they're with their purposes to 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 make sure that uh that the that the transition to full producer responsibility uh occurs and that there are basically contracts in place in 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 the blue box materials are being picked up on a on a go forward with with a hundred percent of that cost being uh borne by producers.
That's the goal.
That is their purpose, I believe.
Yeah, hundred percent of 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 the producers.
Correct.
So after December twenty twenty five, where do we stand?
So
Like, do we come back to this again? Or will it be the will they have something in place with the producer? Like, in other words, well, I guess what I'm trying to get at, will the blue boxes be gone? Or will we always have blue boxes in our dragon?
I guess we would. I would I I I would say you will follow them, we lost at the end.
Yeah, okay.
So he stood to the best to 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 the best.
Okay, yeah, solid. So what happens in December twenty twenty five? Where do we stand? Where where?
So I would I would I would I would see it from my understanding that um certain materials will there are issuing a a tender for sure for certain municipalities that are that that are opting out during that transition period. And then as that transition period holds in, they will issue another competitive bid process. So that the it could be the same contract with the devil contract that takes over January first twenty six with them. I don't know, but it was a three-year contract, five-year contract, whatever, whatever the base can be. So we're we're no longer administering the contracts for 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 blue box. We still need to ensure contracts for the solid waste collection.
So circular material will be doing the uh blue box, I guess. Is that right? We'll still be responsible for the solid waste?
Um Yes, we would still we will still be responsible for these orders.
Okay, so it's it's supposed to be going back to the producers. So we sign a three-year deal, opted out.
So we know, so so we won't, we're we're not signing any um so what we would be the only thing that we would be signing is would be a contract for whatever um contract for the that that is selected to pick up our our municipality in between February twenty twenty five and December twenty twenty five for those um we'll call it non non eligible locations uh in in the new system. And after after the fact of January first twenty six, they just they 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 won't be picked up. Those non eligible locations. All of the the residential locations that are are eligible locations will continue.
Okay, but January twenty twenty six, they're gonna they're gonna have, like, well, I guess what I'm getting at is when do we stop paying or whoa? Like, we have a contract right now with H T C. We pay them so much a year, right?
Correct.
So under this new system, it's supposed to be the producer's responsibility to pick this up, like Ty, Coke, whoever, right? They're supposed to it be there. So when does this expense gets away from the township or doesn't? I guess that's my main scene is supposed to be the producer's responsibility.
Yes, so currently right now, it's a they they get the split producers in in municipalities. So effective February first twenty twenty five,
Hmm.
it'll be a hundred percent of the uh producers.
To
From the reason from the recycling side.
Yeah.
One hundred percent of 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 the producer's responsibility for all the eligible locations. The only part that we're going to pay for is the ineligible location during that period of February to December.
What's an ineligible location?
The municipal.
Why is that ineligible?
Because it's not a residential.
Okay, okay. Joe's will not be restaurant.
Yeah, in in any of those smaller locations.
Okay.
Where we ended up, where it's kind of against commercial residential.
Yeah. Okay.
We we err on the side of saying that's that's the residential side that's generated that.
Okay. And so that's eligible, all residential's eligible. It's a hundred percent paid by the producer.
Those don't need to pay.
Okay, so I got that wrapped around. Now, is that gonna be just until December twenty twenty five?
Correct, correct. And then uh before that, be before that time, we'll 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 certainly bring back some options on how we how we can potentially give them those ineligible locations on on it may be that you know, what option may be that we just signal the six months advance notice that
Say responsibility.
That they're that 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 that's their responsibility.
Right.
But that's that that's an option. There may be there may be some other options like respect to uh you know, uh centralizable issue.
Yeah.
Where where the
Okay, I think I got that wrapped around. Okay. Oh, go ahead, Mr.
Uh so is is there any uh feedback you're getting so far from uh central, whatever they're called here, it doesn't matter.
Circular.
Circular circular materials. Um but I mean, when you think about it, the 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 best cost for pickup option for both us and them would be to collaborate, if you will, and see if there's somebody who can do it all, I would think. Maybe that's not their thinking, but is there any conversation about collaborating with them for for the other road or is that maybe something that you'll talk about later on as well?
Uh through the chair, I would I would say that would be something that we would discuss later on, once that contract has 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 been selected and see if there's some opportunity to do that, right?
Awesome.
I think some of the difficulty is that most likely those multi-string units that that are collective or curbside solid waste in uh blue box in in one vehicle, it likely won't be one vehicle. So that they can have complete separation so that they have a better chance of 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 not uh not hitting those contamination charges.
Twenty. Perfect. We'll see what happens.
Okay, so February of twenty twenty five, it starts and we're off the hook then for for the blue box. It's producers, hundred percent producers.
Correct, it will be it will be the producer's contract.
And and our contract with the solid waste expires then.
Correct, so.
So.
So if we're the the difficulty is right now, there's so many moving parts that if I I anticipate that will be back
Okay.
in a few, like in a few months to to determine whether we want to whether or 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 tender or just the solid waste payment, or we want to try to get a sense of of the potential contract that would be selected and if they can provide goals, then maybe it 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 may serve at least on the initial part to to go with soldiers. I'm just not sure.
Yeah, this, yeah. I mean, this has been going on, wow, five years that I know. I mean, I went on to you know.
I I would I I
Two two seminars and holy, looking on this blue box, we're still for but at least I mean, if if we have to pick her, I mean, if 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 uh H T C could pick up our solid waste and the circular materials can't give them the contract to pick up the 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 blue box kind of defeats the purpose of going down the road. We're gonna have one truck going down the road for us picking up our solid waste, and then you're gonna have another truck going down the road and picking up our our blue boxes there that are, you know, the producer's responsibility. We have two vehicles going down the road, cut possible.
Uh I I I I would say quietly, well
Yeah.
Like regardless, like I'd argue that you will have two units.
That makes sense. We're trying to, you know, cut out few. Go ahead, Mr. Martel.
Through the chair, do we have any idea on numbers of how many businesses are we're picking up from now?
We'll we'll open some ineligible sources. I I I anticipate that we do have a really good handle on that. I just don't have a number uh tonight, but but certainly we'll bring that back. I I don't, I just I I I haven't had the opportunity to to review to to review that to review that down to a little bit of a timeline with the the opt-in and opt-out. So that was the that was our
I know.
I'll wait, but I won't sleep. Okay.
Okay, there is a recommendation, guys. Is everybody done? Mr. Martel. There is a recommendation that committee recommends that council staff can notify the circular materials that the township will be often out of buying blue box service duration in the transit period and to enter an agreement with circular materials contracted to provide to continue collection and non-eligible source during this transition. Moved by Mr. Ward and seconded by Mr. Smell. All in favor? Carrie. No, good discussion. It bothers me. Still bothers me. Eight and Svenceable Lagoon Splitter Box Relining Pro Chip. Eric, are you on?
Yes, uh through the chair.
Go ahead.
Um to uh come here to award the Central Lagoon Splitter Box project, the the project was previously scheduled to be completed in twenty twenty, the COVID pandemic supply source so shorted this and the awarded contract, I think, bigger word, so it was canceled in twenty twenty two. That funding was then transferred to uh place a smooth speed valve at one of our boots. Um the splitter box itself, the cement is uh material derived in sulfide. Um previous repairs have been completed by cement purging. Um epoxy line, these filler blocks would provide a uh longer longevity in the across the environment. So we submitted an R F Q to our website and I invited several firms to bid on it on February thirty first, my point of report. That tender closed on February twenty ninth, twenty twenty four, and we received four uh firms submitted bids by the deadline. Um you can see that your prices range from uh thirty seven, seven oh nine, to eighty seven thousand, seven hundred. Um all tender quotations are received in twenty twenty four, budgeting on twenty five thousand. The prices, a variable price due to the increased costs of the epoxy, the chemical and labor costs. They have uh come to be able to uh offer, so one would be uh to order the contracts in clear water structures, so the splitter box three running project, that's hundred plus thirty seven thousand, seven hundred nine dollars plus non-revenue H S T. Often two, uh delay the project, uh this could potentially low impact operations and impactful project priorities. Um our reserve fund as of March one twenty four has a balance of four hundred forty eight as of March one twenty four, has a balance of four hundred forty eight thousand nine, nine by orders and fifteen cents.
Pretty easy one. Um, go ahead. Anything, Mr.?
No, I'm with you. It's an easy one. And I think I don't feel like I've been talking about this one for years. And maybe it's just because I've been in meetings, listening to it for, before I was councillor as well, but uh, you know, we wouldn't talk about it so long that the erosion was happening and, you know, uh even though it's more than budget, you gotta do it, so.
Mr. Smell?
No, I agree with the recommendation.
And Mr. Martel.
I agree with the table.
Okay, um, clear water structures, they're the lowest. Have they done workforce? Are you, are you familiar with them, Eric?
Uh, we've not had that since our company worked, but the members that who work for Clearwater, that have been worked for us uh on the many of the projects.
So there's no issues there? You don't?
No, we, uh, no.
Gordon, okay. That was my own concern. The uh, so are we taking the, are we taking the forty three, everything out from reserves to cover that? Cause there was twenty five thousand with the twenty five thousand that we, we were in. That's replacing this, the gate valve. Is that right? That we already transferred?
We spent that money to our, to replace our.
The gate valve, that twenty five that we transferred. So we're, we're doing the whole forty three then, right? At the reserves?
The thirty seven would be.
Or thirty seven?
Forty three.
Yeah. Okay. So people, there is a recommendation the committee recommends council awards a splitter box, uh relining project R F Q dash E N V dash O one twenty twenty four to clear water structure in the amount of thirty seven thousand, seven hundred nine dollars plus H S T and a ten percent contingency utilizing funds from the Spensive Wastewater Reserves to an offset limit of forty three thousand. Do I get a mover? Moved by Mr. Ward and seconded by Mr. Martel. Any discussions? Questions on it? Was good. Yep. All in favor? Carrie. Thanks, Eric, for that. And I guess you're up next on this one too, right?
Yes, uh, through the chair, this would be uh Spensive Lagoon Mag Meter uh project, which is a project. In January twenty twenty three, we've completed our annual calibrations, and we're unable to uh verify and calibrate our flow meter um due to the ancient history of the original vintage nineteen ninety. This, so it is uh been in service for quite, quite a few years. Uh, the issue with this installation does require full bypass craving of our, our course made insulation, uh electrical issues. So there is a bad planning involvement. Uh, we did submit a request for proposal on the same as January thirty first, but the tender closing uh February twenty ninth. Um, and sent out to multiple companies. Uh, one uh company did bid on the project by the deadline. Um, in summary, it is pretty smaller, it's developing, was the sole bidder at thirty three thousand five hundred. Um. In the prices that come in, they're required in probably three questions or for fifteen thousand. I think a lot of the costs associated with coordinating operating the bypass, which there is some liability there, and I think that was factored for the price. Um. We have a couple of options. Uh, one would be to award the project piece development, utilizing the fifteen thousand dollar budget capital for the spur. Uh, reduced transfer to reserves in twenty twenty four could potentially cover remaining balance of eighteen thousand five hundred. The special Louise Waters Fund would utilize, would utilize the funding deficits. Uh, two would be to delay the project and the end project may impact subsequent work under future budgets. Uh, we're also going to be reevaluating sanitary reserve rates later on. Now, this will set that all for all.
Good. Um, there's recommendations. People, the committee recommends that council one awards Spencer Lagoon Mag Meter and Installation Project Eastern Welling and a tender cost of thirty three thousand, five hundred dollars, non-rebated H S T and utilize any operation budget surplus in twenty twenty four to cover the remaining balance of eighteen thousand five hundred. And two, if required, utilize the Spensive Wastewater Reserve front to cover any deficit. Do I have a mover on that? Over Mr. Smell and seconded by Mr. Martel. Any comments or questions on this before I call the question?
Uh, just, just what, so we had a budget of fifteen thousand dollars. Was that sort of a, just a rough gas number or did we have a previous board or something that? That led us?
No, that was a, that's, it was not a previous.
So it's not like the price has doubled. We just, okay, that's worth it. Yep, okay. That's the time.
Well, Mr. Smell. Go ahead, Mr. Grant.
Because it's, 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 it's the chair. He gets uh fair. Chief operator did uh inquire with respect to, 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 I'm not sure that was last year or, 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 and, and that was kind of roughly what the uh, what that, the cost was estimated. They actually uh, I didn't submit a, didn't submit a bid. Uh, so I think that that was kind of like we, we, we were anticipating that he would be in around that uh uh fifteen to, let's say fifteen, eighteen thousand mark. And as it turns out, that's uh a nothing. Not, not a game, but that's why I, the, that, the, 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 the estimate was uh, was, was the situation.
Mr. Smell?
Yeah, I have one question uh to the chair to Eric. Uh, I have four recommendations, by the way. I just wanna know uh, if you delayed this project and it impacts subsequent work, how, how long would you delay it for? What kind of work?
Uh, there's being able to five year capital plan. So each year we uh hold to do additional projects. So with the booms, there is our leader E C A amendments. Uh, that is um currently in the process of being completed. So there's an unknown, there are additional, additional projects that may have to do, thing that was ministry uh requires us to do uh to create that uh amendment. So we also have additional projects uh we remove all of them within the booms, which is, it can be across the uh project. So anything that we delay now may push everything else um back to the year or so. So uh, there's also potential, um, because uh with the amendments to our E C A, the welding process, the requirement to have annual uh verification of this equipment. So I think getting this installed and, and, and replaced and fixed now ahead of uh the official uh E C A amendments, I think would be good because it may require anything.
But, that's good.
Mr. Martel?
I have nothing. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Okay. You heard the recommendation. All in favor? Thank you. Pretty cheap, thirty years old. Well worth it. You know, I've been in there thirty years. So really, we can't complain on that. Thanks very much, Eric, for that. Moving on to A P Public Works Half Ton Truck Purchase. And who's gonna speak on that? Chris, go ahead.
Thank you.
You're on the hot seat.
And through the chair, an R Q for the purchase of a half ton pickup truck for the February first, twenty twenty four. Invitation to quote or send directly to quote potential performance and posted on township's webpage. Uh, specification for listed on our Q, on our Q by my base sheet. The majority of specifications are related. We're relatively even, the county, but the twenty twenty three Dodge Trisman uh met the specifications more closely. The Dodge, twenty twenty three Dodge Trisman was purchased on March fourth. The township except has received the, the vehicle. And for a purchase price of fifty six thousand, eight hundred and ninety dollars and forty cents. What's normally good, thank you, Justin.
Okay, questions, comments? No recommendation, cause it's already been ordered. Is that right?
Right.
Mr. Ward?
No, uh, this, well, since I know, uh, this was within the budget, I think, right? So.
Sixty grand.
No problem there. So, thanks. Have a good job.
Mr. Smell, uh, just one question. Where is Seaway Motors Prescott?
Through the chair, uh, that is uh just one from the four on one.
Oh, okay. I didn't know it was called Seaway.
Riverside, I do.
Riverside.
Yeah, I do believe it's Riverside.
Good for me.
Through the.
Yeah. Okay, Mr. Martel?
I have no questions. Thank you.
It's already ordered. Um, I know it, we had one lower, um, but the specs of what we, you know, it all went out to, I guess, was it twelve that, when there two and three came back as to bid on? So everybody knew these three knew what we were looking for.
Sorry?
There was four, through the chair, four of the spats went on.
Right.
Four of the spats.
All those specs that we wanted.
Yeah.
Whenever.
There's kind of a calculation on, on the next page shows where the uh Dodge Trisman.
No, I see that together. Yeah, I see that. It has more than in the rest.
The Trisman is actually a working truck.
Right, for what we, for what we wanted, not, not going down the highway on a, on, on a Saturday afternoon. Okay, good. No recommendations. Thank you very much for your report. Uh, A Q Award Dust Suppressive Tender. Are you gonna speak on this too?
Yes, I am, sir.
Thank you.
So uh, the next action item to awards uh supply application of the little dust across the tender. Uh, tender was issued by application on February fifth, point one four to qualified companies in place on the left plane for supply of approximately two hundred and ten dollars meters of liquid dust suppressant. Uh, successful bidder required to go deliver and apply liquid suppressant using standard type equipments. And that received three submissions by March there, twenty twenty four, the holding day. Um. The companies that applied were Dow Lee Dust Control Limited and Pollard Distribution. Uh, the twenty twenty four budget includes seventy four thousand for dust suppression. A low rate was submitted by Dow Lee Dust Control Limited, uh present eighteen cents per liter.
Uh, thank you so much. As a recommendation here, many recommends that council approves awards supplied the dust suppressing tender. E C dash P W dash twenty four O two to daily dust control limited and the unit rate of zero point three seven per liter for two hundred and ten liters to maximum seventy seven thousand and seventy dollars non-rebated H S T. Moved by Mr. Smell and seconded by Mr. Ward. Any questions, comments? On this?
I guess not. Uh, actually, no. So um we've used that, we, the reason right now, right? We use them a few years now as well. So we have good experience and the lowest price, so. Uh, yeah, this is good.
You, Mr. Martel? Yeah, did. And, and daily dust control is in there for we use them as they come in ships. So I'm glad they get it. I really am. Couple of times that we didn't, we didn't get into it. So nice to give it to the local.
Sure.
Okay, A Q, we're going on to A R, Award Crush Rock Tender. Chris, go ahead.
Through the chair.
Oh, you're welcome.
And then to award supply crush rock tender to G Tacker Barian Sons Company Limited. The crush rock tender is issued on February fifth, one twenty four for local companies in place of that upside. For supply of approximately seventy five hundred metric tons of crush rock for gravelly surfacing and shaving. The bid is a successful litter ball and spread five inch crush rock onto uh test by the gravel. Throughout the township. Uh, three bidders were formal gravel, Tacker Barian, and Little Skir.
She said it was close.
Financial considerations of twenty twenty four, well, it was a hundred and ten thousand for me. A little bit was submitted by G Tacker Barian Sons, giving a price of twenty, twenty cents per ton higher than twenty twenty three.
Okay, people, there's a recommendation. Committee recommends that council award the supply of the crush rock tender E C dash P W dash twenty four dash O one to G Tacker Barian Sons for certainly seventy five hundred tons at a unit price thirteen ninety five per metric ton to maximum of one hundred and four thousand, five hundred and fifty non-rebated H S T. Questions, comments? Mr. Ward?
Uh, no, I mean, I think we've used both uh number two and number three, which were very close bids over the years, I think. And I think it kind of goes back and forth. I might even show you this year, but uh, that looks good. Just a quick question. Do we know roughly how many kilometers of roads we have that are gravel? Just, just a, a number.
Sixty seven kilometers.
Sixty seven?
Of gravel.
Oh, yeah, the we make a little. Yeah.
Forty six we've got left? Sixty seven. Right?
Sixty seven?
Yeah.
Better way to, you have to have math for you. So, or. No bad. Right.
Okay, those two were curiosity about that.
Mr. Martel?
No question.
Okay. You heard the recommendation. All in favor? Oh, no. Sorry.
Thank you, sorry. Move her a second.
Not already, huh? Oh, no. Moved by Mr. Martel. Sorry. Yeah, moved by Mr. Martel. And seconded by Mr. Smell. All in favor? Okay, co- council inquiries, notifications. Thanks very much uh, guys for tonight. Appreciate it. Council inquiries and notes of motion. Any? Uh, yeah. Right here, down there. Okay, Meris report. Who? No. No, important, yeah. Uh, I don't get just question here, no question. Close session or close session, undebatable adjournment. Oh. Oh, just before the Merit Report, before we all go, sorry. This is Gord Shaw's last meeting, not your last day, just your last meeting, right? You will be to no more meetings. The pressure's off, ready.
Don't wanna say anything. Thanks.
And we'll have to get together and go for lunch before you go, so.
And I think we've had a cloud rather when we're desperate to winter as well, maybe potentially.
So, undebatable adjournment, moved by Mr. Smell and seconded by Mr. Ward. All in favor, Eric? Adjourn at nine twenty.